Fifty six. La Patina Enterprise LLC. We have five members here in person at two. Available by Zoom. Ms. Anderson booming in and I'm not going to reread this since it's a rezoning from B four to B. And do you have any new exhibits?
I do, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Michael Roth. Spelled R O T H and I am the attorney for the petitioner. I do have a set of exhibits. That I'd like to pass out if I may.
Well, we don't have to let's just mark on Mars. Give them the end here. It can pass out, all right? So could you start with survey?
Yeah, I'm going.
Survey one, site plan two?
That's correct. Great. That is correct, sir. Karen Cartholme, if I may. Read to you. Sorry about that. So the plan of survey is exhibit one. The site plan is exhibit two. We have a location map which will be exhibit three. Number four is a land use and zoning map indicating the land uses and zoning in the vicinity of the subject property. Exhibit number five is a site detail plan indicating sites which they have. Exhibit six is a letter from the village of Bensonville dated one twenty two fourteen. Exhibit seven will be our landscape plan showing setbacks and what proposed development is for the subject property. Number eight is a wetland plan. Number nine is similar to eight. It's it provides no detail in geography in regards to the wetlands. Number ten is a bird's eye rendering of the subject properties that has proposed to be developed. Number eleven is a street rendering of the same and the last one to the twelve is a building elevation.
Okay, thank you. They're all admitted and plus we have seen a resolution of approximately six pages with various attachments from the village of Bensonville. So we take that as Bensonville's exhibit one. Great credit.
Thank you, sir. So with me tonight is Jeff Budgel, our architect for this project. Also church representatives Lou Wirsma and Steve Johnston are here and they are the authorized representatives of the owner and petitioner. In this case, the petitioner being the board and we ask the church.
Are they likely to testify to answer questions?
They are.
Have everybody sworn in at the same time?
Would you all raise your right hands, please? You just soundly swear or affirm the testimony about to give at this class now hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
Over.
Yes. So the the subject development is the Fourth Avenue Gospel Church. The owner is a corporate entity, Fourth Avenue Gospel Building Group. The developers agent, the owner and developer in this matter is La Patina Burman. I don't know if Jim Timmer. He's the president of Burman La Patina running over late this time. So initially I'd like to state also that I'm going to be showing I was didn't know if there'd be. Members of the audience here, so we prepared placards, billboard, and placards, posters boards for the exhibits that are before you. And they are the same. There aren't any differences between the gas station except for their site. So we'll be referencing those and I can point to those in the information there.
Mr. Roth, can you take the microphone with you, please? Thank you.
So the the subject property, as indicated in the survey. It's zero three, one, four, four, three, one, zero, zero, six. This is approximately four point five eight acres on the east side of Illinois Route eighty three. It's about one hundred and fifty two yards, seven hundred and fifty six feet south of Wood Street, excuse me, in Bensonville. And nine hundred and thirteen feet north of Second Avenue. The property is currently zoned R four in the county unincorporated. It has five hundred and seventy five feet of frontage and it's currently improved as the Fourth Avenue Gospel Church. It has one driveway access onto Route eighty three. The subject property lacks infrastructure. There's no city or building, water or sewer available. It's on water. It is on well and septic now. The site is heavily puffered by landscaping that's been existing there for a long time. And it is encumbered by critical wetlands, a substantial proportion of it. The property was acquired by the church in two thousand and thirteen for five hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. And because it's a church, it is exempt from any other property taxes. And this is our land use and zoning map. As you can see, the orange is not incorporated due to the area is thinly with the center of the subject property. The. The property located west, it is basically around the the east side of the subject property, which would be indicated here. And I can get the subject property. It's it's owned by the village of Bensonville and built near the area which is which is owned R three in Bensonville. The property is south of this other property. It is in Route three and it's improved as a five point three acre grand school, Wesley and A Johnson grand school immediately south of the subject property. Five point three acres. Immediately to the north, the subject property is also incorporated Bensonville zone R three. The property is improved. It's an eighteen point one acre site immediately north of the subject property. It's improved with Bensonville Park District facilities, recreational facilities, water park, and it's a recreational center. Connecting between, excuse me, to the east of the subject property, it is also zoned R three and it is improved by the two and a half acre Black Hawk Middle School. And then to the rest of the property is the unincorporated Royal Oaks Residential Development and the Deerland Bureau of Residential Subdivisions. The subject property is, I think, I think I entered, eight tenths of a mile south of Irving Park Road. But it's not easy to see on the small location map that I provided. The measurement from Irving Park Road to the subject property is eight tenths of a mile. Along that stretch on the east side of Route eighty three, there is one residential development. That residential development, there's a combined group of about twenty single family homes and hundreds of multifamily residential development. All the rest of the eight tenths of a mile is is used and developed for other purposes. And obviously, you can see that these are large tracts of land immediately around the subject property with institutional facilities, art districts, schools, etc. And then as you as you go just north of of the subject property. Eventually you get to the railroad tracks and you get to Irving Park Road, which which is non-residential. The proposed development in this case, I'll go back to. I guess it'd be exhibit five. Well, let me let me talk about this one. Okay. So so I'm now showing the site recap, which is in our exhibit five and it's exhibit five in your page. And the proposed development for this site is a climate controlled self storage. One hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and eighty five square feet. The first floor building footprint, well, it's a three story building. First floor footprint would be thirty six thousand, two hundred and fifteen feet. The height of the structure will be divided forty two feet. The subject property, as it knows, would have a floor ratio of point five five. The parking permit is two per unit and there'd be two guest spots. Also also provided with staff onsite guest and guest parking. Our architect Jeff Budgel would speak to the building specifics, parking circulation, landscaping, and the operations. Once this property is developed, it will generate taxes. Certainly an excess of one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year above what it gets now. So the zoning request in this case is to rezonate from R four to B one to allow the climate controlled self controlled storage facility. We are asking for approval of a conditional use in the B one zoning district to allow that. Variances? Yes, we are asking for a variance. As I mentioned, the floor ratio we're requesting is point five five. The floor ratio under code is point two five. The variance is also being requested to allow a proposed ten parking spaces in within the front yard setback area. We had originally indicated that we're asking for a variance to reduce the rear wall setback of the building, but that's not necessarily in there. And we are asking for a variance to reduce to allow parking in that front yard landscape setback area from twenty feet down to ten feet. So that's the background on the property and the data. Our exhibit five will show what the existing requirements are and what is being proposed in this.
Can I just interrupt you for a moment?
Yes.
Can I ask that you not make further reference to values of property or real estate tax impact? A long time ago, I was cautioned not to rely on that, so. I think that's still the position of the state's integrity.
Fair enough.
I hope that's been said as I was a long time ago, but and I don't think it's material to us.
Okay.
So go right ahead.
So at this point, there is a there's some background on on this property and the owner's efforts to develop the property. I think that that is relevant and I would ask Lou Wirsma to please step up. And Mr. Chairman, if the board will permit, Mr. Wirsma is prepared to testify to certain facts, but if I may be allowed to ask some questions as we proceed. If we get his testimony, I would appreciate it.
Well, we don't usually do a narrative question to answer like a trial style. You can tell us what he's going to testify to and then make an offer of proof and ask him to ask the story. Or he can just give us an narrative, whatever. Whatever your preference.
Okay, I'm gonna, I think rather than, I'd like to have you here in.
Go for it.
Okay.
Start with your name and who you are.
Lou Wirsman. I'm the president of the Fourth Avenue Gospel Building Corporation.
Spell your name.
My name is Lou, L O U I S, Glass and Wirsman, W I E R S U M. The president of the Fourth Avenue Gospel Building Incorporated, the current owner. We own the building. I own it very clear. We purchased it in two thousand and thirteen in August. With the purpose of tearing the existing church building down. That existing church building was built in the sixties. It's an older building. It's somewhat dilapidated. Our intent was to purchase it, tear that building down and build up the larger church facility there. On the site. So we met with Bensonville because we thought that we'd have to annex into Bensonville. To get sewer and water, which we were advised we would have to do to get sewer and water to the facility, which would be required for the for the for the building we're building. Because it would be a sprinkled facility. So we approached Bensonville at that time to ask them what would be required as far as the annexation. At that time, we're advised. We also asked whether there were wetlands on the property. We actually told us there weren't any. And that was part of the condition of our sale. We bought it assuming there were no wetlands on the property. So then we went ahead and purchased it. They also told us at that time that they did not have, they had a tree ordinance. The page did not have a tree ordinance. So any any trees that we needed to remove, we should remove before we. But I had to do it. So all I remember is got out the chainsaws and tired them off and compared to the trees that were being in the way of the project. Shortly thereafter, we had a violation, Lou Wirsman, the Page County, that we were. Cutting trees and grinding stumps and without that it was a violation, I believe it's an exhumation violation. Which we had no idea we were in violation. So that that kind of opened the can, the worms up that there's a wetlands on the property, which we didn't realize. Going through that process, we, you know, we spent years trying to try to get them. We had to get it delineated. We had to try to find out what what we needed to do to move forward. What you. What's your fair bit of, fair bit of cost? Some hundred thousand dollars of engineering fees. And cost of trying to do our diligence and, I mean, our our engineering to get the project moving along. And. Part of that was that they referred to what the the water mains would be looped from second to what is Wood Street. It was very, very costly. Working out all those details, there were many delays to the project. It came about in, let's see, if we can get rid of it down here, but at some point. We realized that didn't seem like they were going to work with this as far as this project. Early on, they were very open about wanting us to build the church and they were proud of our development, but due to the course of it. It became apparent that it's very hard to get anything done. We had a Zoom meeting, I think it was in twenty twenty. Where.
Okay, can I just ask you to maybe move along through the history of this? This is, I guess, general interest, but it really doesn't go, I don't see where it's tying to.
Yeah, it's kind of getting to, but yeah, this, so I'm cutting forward to twenty twenty. And at that point in time, we had a Zoom meeting with the village of Bensonville. Who suggested that they would like to see a commercial industrial development site rather than a church. So that at that point in twenty twenty, we decided then that we would sell the property and move on and find another site for our trip. That's when we, that's when we went ahead and started the market for property. We did have a potential buyer for a multi, multi-family development there. He had starched the city at that time and they didn't. It didn't work with Bensonville for density. They didn't improve his project. The project density just wasn't feasible for the site. So that's kind of where where we ended up here is it's really. We tried to do multi-family residential, single family homes. There just isn't enough site there to do a proper single family home development. So for us to sell a property or what needs to be a commercial industrial site. And in twenty twenty Bensonville did recommend us producing a commercial industrial. Part of that, part of it looks like a commercial industrial buyer.
Mr. Roth, this last bit does touch on one of the zoning rezoning standards. But the information was a little conclusory and it simply not suited for residential development. So we have to determine that. That's supposed to be our conclusion. Can we hear a little bit about the background facts of whether it was ever offered as R four, single family, multi-family? Yep. Mr. Wispor, did you enter into a contract, sale of that? For a president?
Yes, yes, we did enter into a contract for a multi, multi-family development. I don't know that that buyer actually made, you know, written application to the village. I know he was speaking with the village on it. But that that was in. It was two years ago, I think, and that that died. Because he couldn't satisfy Bensonville with density. He needed to make the project work. He needed more density than what was allowed. That makes sense.
When you marketed the property for various uses?
You're exclusive on any marketing.
Have you had offers to acquire and develop the property? Other than the one contract that you talked about for multi-family residential?
Yes, we had, was it last year, we had another. Commercial industrial developer. I don't think he went, he didn't go this far along in the process. He did make, he made initially three. I think it was only one actual written contract that we had with the residential developers. I see.
So it's rare.
And since then, have you had development opportunities or calls, inquiries for other developments that are commercial and make?
Many inquiries for truck parking, somebody truck parking, many inquiries for that type of project. We've turned those, you know, we haven't responded to those or we've turned them away because we weren't sure that that would be approved by the village or. For the use on that location. So we've had many, many inquiries. It's a very hot market, as you all know, trailer truck parking, but many inquiries regarding that.
Have you ever had an offer or have you ever had an offer to sell, to purchase your property for single family development? Single family residential development?
I don't know whether we've had offers. We've had, we've had very initial inquiry. But that it'd have to be very, very low dollar in order to make anything work, you know, the single family.
And lastly, for clarification, your initial purchase of the property was for, and you're, yes, your initial purchase of the property was for what purpose?
For a new church structure.
Did the village indicate its support for that initially?
Yeah, say that time again.
Did the village manager change his mind about that?
Yes. Well, as I said, in twenty twenty, we had a Zoom meeting with the village. And at that time, our whole purpose for the Zoom meeting was. To find out what they really wanted us to do with the property. Because as I said, we bought it in two thousand and thirteen. In two thousand and twenty, we still didn't have anything further along with our church development. We were getting hedged on about every road we took to trying to get the project done. It became obvious they didn't want it. So we told the Zoom meeting, asked them quite frankly what they wanted us to do. The village manager said that he felt that it was a good tip for commercial industrial use. Suggested that we might do it for that purpose.
That's all from this with us. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like Jeff Budgel to step up. And again, Jeff is the site developer and architect and he can walk you through the specific proposal for this development.
Okay. So, all right, Mr. Roth, you're done with the presentation as it relates to the rezoning request? So now we're on to the condition viewed.
Yes, yes.
So I'm Mr. Jeff Budgel, B U G E L L, from Architect Studio in Overst. I'm the architect. Afterwards, the architect of the project. This is a preliminary site plan that we prepared for. One of the major challenges for the site is the wetlands. They cut across the property over here. Our new wetlands mediation with sound showing as wetlands do not tend to shrink over time. They grow. So it's had a little bit bigger and there are critical wetland, is this what? The critical wetland, so we need to try and remain a hundred feet away of the building. So because of that, we took what we typically do is a two story building. It's a three story building here because that reduces the footprint. And allows, it decreases the impervious, the effect and impact that it'll have on stormwater and the wetlands and allows it to stay further away. Building is situated in the southwest corner, adjacent to the existing opening, which would be maintained and reused. There's a circulation of fire lane around the entire building to allow access for the fire department. And then there is parking spaces along the front here with handicap and a strike walk to the entrance of the building. There are two overhead doors for indoor load in, load out. For the property and then there are a series of doors around the perimeter of the building that offer a limited amount of exterior access to the to the space. This building is, in my opinion, obviously, I think I'm a little invested in it. It's a good looking building with a king's fan, decorative metal panels, they're insulated panels. It is pleasant in colors and we have a rendering that we can show. It's a rendering of a similar proposed building. It's not this exact one, but it shows the colors and the intent. The existing trees offer a buffer over on the south side of the building and there's also a number of trees here. And there's an opening that allows some visibility to the building. And let me show you the rendering real quick. This is a bird's eye rendering. And then there's a street level rendering down here of a similar building that we did. You see the fire lane and there's some buildings on the side. But the colors are a green color and then there's a variety of grays to colors that's going around the building. Typically, there's glass and glass will show. Typically, there's glass and glass, so, uh, 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 show some of the storage doors on the inside.
So, um, I've done. Now, there's a lot of zoning boards that are fond of asking, uh, what color the panel plots are if the, uh, if a restaurant is proposed on the site. I'm not really into color, but, um. Are you saying that this is precisely what you propose or is it general?
This is, the renderings, this is, this is what we're proposing for a site and the building location. The renderings are typical of buildings that the, this developer has done.
Okay, and, but the key critical zoning issue on this rendering is the circulation pattern there and the parking.
This is very similar, this is very similar, the plating in front is where it's circulation on the building.
Same with the site plan.
Okay.
When we talk about that.
Sure.
Determining precisely what's proposed.
Sure. So as I said, uh, there's two-way circulation around the building for, uh, fire and for access to the exterior doors. Series of parking lots, which is what facilitates the need, uh, we're trying to push this into the, to the, to the west and the south. So we, uh, have the, the parking lots a little bit into the setback, the front yard setback and the landscaping setback, that's why those two variances are there. There is no, uh, request for variance for the setback of the building, the building is, is sixty feet from the front property, and there's no need for any relief there. The other relief that, uh, the attorney, uh, alluded to is the down the side. We were able to push this over so that relief doesn't necessary anymore in the side yard setback, we have the required, uh, forty feet, forty feet, eight inches. Uh, I don't know if you have questions, but we have to answer them.
It's critical to your request for variations that you demonstrate. A hardship, unique circumstance, or practical difficulty apparently, I mean, obviously, that is satisfied by the wetlands. Uh, there's setbacks in the, in the front yard setback, forty feet to twenty feet of parking. Uh, I think that's pretty obvious, the reason for that is obvious. Um, can I just ask generally? Can you state affirmatively for the record that the requests for variations are precisely what is required because of the wetlands?
Yes, they are, uh, we, we pushed this over as far as we can and we pushed it a little more, uh, uh, because of the wetlands and, and that's what pushed the parking into that setback.
Okay, I guess.
And, and we actually pulled it back horizontally to avoid the, uh, side yard setback relief because there's a lot of room over here. And you're, you're able to do that and still maintain over a hundred feet from the building corner to the, to the wetlands.
Okay.
So absolutely, that's the case.
All right. What is a hundred feet?
Hundred feet, uh, we took the worst spot, there's more here, but we had a dimension here, it's a hundred feet, uh, plus from the corner of the building to the wetlands, if they are here.
Is it possible? If you, you moved it already, you, you, uh, negate the need for the setback where you put the shrub.
On the side, the side there.
What would stop you from putting some of the parking spots on the north side of them?
Well, uh, the.
Is that the wetland or is that just?
Well, I think the, the, the problem with that is the handicap parking. Uh, Illinois code, the Illinois accessibility code requires that it be adjacent to the entrance of the building, which it is now, if we move it over here. It's no longer adjacent, we would be, we would no longer be compliant with the Illinois accessibility code.
Okay, all right. Well, uh, Mr. Roth, I don't know how you intend to proceed, do you want us, do you want me to see if there's any questions from the board for this witness now? Are you gonna come back to him?
Not quite done, Jim, I was gonna ask him to testify, uh, to the operations of this, um. To address some of the issues in regards to the conditional use and the variances.
Well, that's good, but let. Let's see if there's any questions the architect has to be setbacks and wetlands and kind of things that Mr. Ketter already started. Does anyone have any questions strictly limited to that subject matter? Yeah, Mr. Schultz.
Yes, thank you, um, I don't hear that there's a violation of the property. And I, I, it sounds to me like a police violation is strictly because they were doing so. Uh, tree removal, things of that nature, um, this plan does. They are sure that you're going to resolve that issue prior to having these approvals, is that something you're better putting to your pride?
I don't think that, I think it's our understanding that that's no longer an issue, we, we could be more.
Well, I'm just reading, but the question is, uh, and, and there's a note from, from water people that say that.
Our understanding is that the, the, the violation was the cutting down of the tree.
Right.
And, and, and the trees are gone. Um, there certainly is a landscaping plan for this development, and there is substantial, uh, uh, natural landscaping there. Um, as far as the violation goes, we have no information that the city is, or excuse me, that the county is, um, pursuing any, any enforcement there. The result of what happened was that the removal of the trees then technically converted the wetlands into a critical wetland. And the critical wetland then, um, resulted in this substantial, substantially larger setbacks than are required on the site. So our development is, as a reason, you know, the, the design of this development is as a result of the dictates of the county, uh, being a critical wetland.
Mr. Allison, are you aware of anything that the county is concerned about at this time?
Yeah, go ahead. So, um, there is a current stormwater violation notice on this property. Because as we heard of the cutting down of the trees in the wetland, the wetland was not delineated. And before the trees were cut down, which is Mr. off indicated, then translates into this being critical wetland. Irrespective of this development, the property owner, whoever the property owner is or will be, is responsible for restoring the wetland. Um, and not only restoring the wetland to what it was, but also, um, restoring it at three times to ones that was disturbed. Because of the disturbance occurred before it was delineated. This project, as we understand it, will give developed, will assist in the restoration of the wetland. But irrespective of this project, that wetland will have to be restored at some point to clear up the violation.
With the restoration of the wetland, this mission of critical wetland remains, I, that's a question. And the hundred-foot setback question remains, is that right?
So the, the critical wetland, where we and will not go away. The, when we talk about a hundred-foot setback, we're talking about a hundred-foot buffer. As, as a jurisdictional, what, uh, wetland, the buffer is fifty feet, as a, as a critical wetland, the buffer is a hundred feet. And that was caused by the, the damage that occurred prior to being delineated.
So this will be resolved, it's really.
It'll be resolved either by this development's ultimately approved by this developer or by whoever owns the property, it still have to be resolved.
Any other questions? No, I don't see it.
Mr. Chairman, again, I'd like to have Kim Nakatina, uh, the developer join.
He was, you see the. You have to be someone insert.
Raise your right hand, please. You just silently swear in front of the testimony about to give this clause now hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Okay, state your name, spell your name and tell us who you are.
I am. I am a potential purchase service factory. So I just found, I'm, 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 as to. It's, it's a, um, it's a friendly, uh, with the, and most any village, whatever, it's now. Um, we realize it's, it's a, it's a poor village, or poor community, I should say. Everybody tends to need to have storage and energy storage, so with that, um. And I want to mention that, you know, the, the hours of operating typically are, um, from nine at to six or seven P M. Nobody gets access into this facility unless it's granted by the, for the management group. And that's on a regular occasion, and it's usually rated satisfied. It's a very complex about see whatever that I do. Eight two zero and uh. Everything control and there's no way to get into the facility unless you actually um. Land scan or on a right wing of the facility, okay? Uh, the traffic for Route eighty two into this facility is very minimal, typically one forty minutes about you would go eight to ten visitors per day. Hence the reason for the parking spaces that may be loaded and most likely in a weekend. So it's very light traffic. Considering what a church may uh bring in their end or anything. Protection and security system is going to be part of the process. Satisfy the uh needs for. This figure and all fire protection. Um, we have um. We would obviously comply with all those that are generated from either Dupage County and or. Vansipus or any other group that we'd have to deal with. So, um, other than that, um. It's a it's a moderate facility, but not an I S O to the the residential residential. So it shouldn't bother us starting about plus six lines of highway, so. Any questions related?
Yeah, well, let uh begs the question of where are you talking about uh light posts or? Side mounted lighting or?
These glass areas. Which. Are. But not a it's not a beacon of love, let's say, basically lit in harmony and. The uh driveway areas are the only things that are lit for that purpose. There's nothing shining across the street. The residential lines or eyes or whatever.
And so in, for instance, uh, in the rear or on the sides, there's no post mounted. Lights, they're all. Then, um. The hours of operations are nine A M. until six or seven, but access is permitted until ten. I don't know. Okay, uh, so the manager issue is that there's an onsite manager.
Right. Right.
Okay, uh, oftentimes we ask for, uh, you know, I hear buzzing and. Whining of speakers, but I don't hear myself. So am I? I'm here. Is this working?
It's not very loud, if it is.
I can hear you loud and clear. It's all I care about.
That's it. But the speaker, don't be so close to the microphone up there, because then it gets a little mumbly.
Okay.
Okay, uh, well, I'm glad I resolved that. Now I forgot my uh. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Uh, you're kind, I haven't had a chance to read your contract. Is that an exhibit, Mr. Ross? It was not. It's not at our. Well, it's common. Uh, it's common for us to take. An exhibit of precisely the contract or your standard contract. Because our concern is the nature of goods that are stored there and limitations on the nature of those goods. Obviously, I'm focusing on flammable hazardous waste.
Well, that is into the category of the remote, the explosive and or predatory items stored and.
And hazardous waste? Obviously.
Sorry, yeah, no hazardous waste, right.
Okay, great. That's in your contract. Can we can we then take yours?
Is it been some space contract? I don't know what you got.
It says extra space. That is it.
Yeah, we might get a minute with our application. I would ask for it to be maybe to the thirteen.
Okay, it's in as uh it's a bit thirteen. Um, that's all the questions that I have for the. That I can think of for the moment. So can I go down the line here and? See if there's any. None for Mr. Murphy, none for Mr. Ketter. Any follow ups from Mr. Schultz? Saying nothing. Uh, Ms. Anderson? And Mr. Moran?
I do have one question. It's hard to tell on the rendering drawings, but are there overhead garage doors all the way around the building on the first floor?
Yes, yeah.
So then, did I hear right? There's going to be two-way traffic? In around the building?
If there's enough room, there can be when for fire protection, fire trucks are going to go one way around whichever way they want.
Well, that was that was my only question. It looks a little tight because the one drawing shows one way and then. You guys had mentioned that there would be two-way. And then there's overhead garage doors. If I was emptying out my pickup truck or my car, I'm going to back up to that garage door. And it's, it just seems a little tight, that's all.
Well, actually, you know, typically a person is there for twenty minutes to a half hour if nobody's running their business out of the facility. So you just go in and you're doing your thing and you're leaving. So. Obviously, if there's an emergency situation and you're there, you need to yield to the fire trucks coming through that.
Okay, just a concern I had looking at this drive. Thank you.
Well, there's at least thirty feet from the actual building edge to the edge of the.
And Mr. Ross, anything else?
I I just wanted to also mention that, you know, people are concerned about crime and vandalism, the old world version of the uh. First generation self-source facilities may have geared to that, but because these are so. Well-maintained, new and security is all because and cameras are all over the place. Typically, there is not a lot of crime that happens, at least not in Bensonville area, maybe in the inner city, but out here not.
How are you enjoying this site? Because it's so safe.
Yes, of course.
Okay, Mr. Ross.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's it. That's our presentation. Uh, obviously, if you wish to have me speak to this with standards, I can do that now or I can do it at the end. Whatever your preference. I mean, we you had you had mentioned. Res zoning standards, I I hopefully presented it for evidence regarding the condition of using variant standards.
Well, if you want to go through, usually our practice is, uh. You give us a narrative, tell us the facts and figures. And we start out whether you comply with the various standards, but if you want to. Add any detail on any of the seven standards or the general zoning standards, conditional use, variation standard, whatever, you know, it's here.
Well, the only, I I guess the only point that I that I wanted to add that. Touch upon, but I'm but I'm not sure that it got through, and that is the trend of development in the area. There there is, this is a a fully developed area, but from putting to the site. Um, uh, as as everyone is well aware, I three ninety has been built. It's it's dramatically changed the uh. Uh, the landscape of uh Route eighty three as you proceed to the north. Um, substantial redevelopment going on for non-residential uses. Street on Route eighty three, uh, the city where the Alvin's uh is permitted and is is incentivizing substantial redevelopment of residential areas to um. Do industrial data centers, et cetera. And so, uh, because the property on the on the east side of the street of Route eighty three is already substantially developed. This is not going to um in some way negatively affect future development on that side of the street. Again, the properties on the east side of Route eighty three are mostly institutional properties. Um, value I do not need is 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 important, but regardless of the value of this school. We cash fair market value, school of cash fair market value, but from profits with facility and 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 those uses, this is not going to have any negative effect on everybody. Get that to them. So those are the points that I wanted to make.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, the only person that I see in the audience that's not part of the petitioner's uh presentation team is the gentleman from. Bensonville, we have a resolution from you from Bensonville. I think you testified last time. Is there anything you want to add based on the?
Uh, I'm not.
Testimony? We, I saw that. Oh, we had a discussion. Okay, so you want to make some remarks already there? I I note for the record that you were sworn in because I saw you raise your hand.
All right, my name is Nick Arquette. That's A R Q U E T T E. I am the village planner for the village of Bensonville. Let me get right into it. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the village Bensonville and its residents today. I appreciate your time. The village Bensonville strongly objects to the petition by rezoning them over Dupage County property for a self-source facility in five minutes, zero four seven, regarding. The village board of trustees passed resolution number one, two, three, twenty twenty two on October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, authorized in protest. An objection to rezoning, additional use permit, the variations requested for this zoning petition. Resolution has been officially filed and dates stamped with Dupage County. Copy here and then I believe there's copy on desk as well. Um, the properties in the northeast and south and southern property lives within port limits of the village. There is our three single unit dwelling district. When they fish a zoning app and zoning ordinance of Villa Bensonville. Villages, single unit dwelling districts continue north. We can be commercially zone properties on Herman Park Road. Uh, south of Second Avenue and East York Road, which is approximately a one mile span across one of the village's largest sections of contiguous residential homes. The trend of development in the general area of the property, single family homes and public institutions. The current Dupage County R four, single family residence zoning classification was not diminished the property's value. For the value of surrounding properties because the zoning is compatible with zoning classifications, the kind of development north. South, east and west of the property. Plus, the potential rezoning of the property would be completely out of character for the region. It does not align with the Dupage County Route eighty three corridor plan. Doubt in November of twenty twenty one. That's this plan, and I do uh replace some pages from that plan on on desk in front of you as well.
So that means you want to make it an exhibit?
Uh, yes, I would like.
We'll take it as Bensonville's exhibit two.
Thank you. Um, for the village Bensonville comprehensive plan. Uh, one of the main goals of the Dupage County Route eighty three corridor plan is to establish the county's future land use plan to be consistent with those neighboring dispossessions. The pros and res on it would be deviating in both the future land use zone and the Route eighty three corridor plan. As well as the future land use plan for the village Bensonville. The section on self-planning area four specifically designated subject parcel, a single family attached residential. This section is seen on pages two and three of packet in front of you. I noted those pages um in the top right with the packet. Self-planning area four states the following. One notable exception is the property adjacent to and on the east side of Route eighty three across from Deer Path Road. Located between Johnson Elementary School, Blackhawk Middle School, and Bensonville Water Park and Slash Band. Property has a potential for land use transition and would support development of townhomes. This would provide additional residential opportunities in the study area and have easy pedestrian access to local schools and recreation. Again, that's from this packet and uh the Route eighty three. Further detail on this site is presented as opportunity site one. Return page four of the packet. Opportunity site one, self-planning area four, provides graphic illustration, site plans, example images of cluster housing and shareable space. And the following statements. The site is designated in this plan for townhome use, which would expand housing options and price points in the study. Well, located directly along Route eighty three, the property is uniquely located. For residential use because of its direct access to local schools, that would be Blackhawk Middle School and Johnson Elementary. Parks, Bensonville Water Park and Slash Band, a shared use path along South Church Street. And the faceless service along Route eighty three. Building additional higher density housing could help increase the opportunity for families at lower price points. That may already be working in the area and were used in eighty three. Acceptance of a rezoning for commercial use in subject site effectively eliminates any opportunity for the Page County and the village Bensonville to achieve the same goal. By creating more diverse housing opportunities for families within an existing cluster of institutional and residential uses. The village Bensonville strongly opposes the condition to press. Therefore, the village referred to Dupage County. To deny proposed rezoning, conditional use, the variation to the property for self-source facility as sought with zoning petition. As a longtime resident of Dupage County, a parent and a professional planner for the village Bensonville. And sincerely hope that you take extremely careful consideration surrounding the decision on rezoning this property. It's not a one, five, or ten year decision. It's a decision that will affect generations of residents and students to come.
Okay, thank you very much. Does any member have a question for the gentleman in Bensonville? Mr. Ross, you're set. Want to pay those or do you have two questions? Right ahead.
Sir, can you please identify for the board uh each residential development that has occurred within the last decade? Uh, on the east side of Route eighty three, cutting Route eighty three, north of Wesley Street. Are you the planning director? Are you aware of any? Okay, the village planner. Are you aware of any?
I'm sorry, what was that response? Thank you.
And in your consideration of the development of the subject property for residential development, how many units are you expecting uh that that site could accommodate? Considering the wetlands on the site and the critical left wetland condition?
I do not have a unit per se in mind. They're willing to look at different. Do not have a unit uh number in mind nor the city of Bensonville uh for a specific project.
In your proposal for for your plan for redevelopment of the subject property for uh. Single unit residential development, um, have you taken into consideration? I dot's jurisdiction over Route eighty three and what sort of access and traffic generation would occur as a result of the residential development?
The village of Bensonville, uh, future land use plan was developed with comprehensive on twenty fifteen. I was not a part of that development, so I do not know the background. Um, and as for the. Route eighty three corridor plan developed for Dupage County, uh, I believe I see that. Then I have a background on that as well, but I assume that that's.
Well, my question is, is will I dot allow right in, right out, or full access at the subject site?
I'm not speaking right now.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Do you want to summarize?
Members of the board, thank you. Um, thank you for your attention to this matter. I appreciate it. So, um, with regards to the request that we've made, the um, uh, the standards uh under the county's code. With regard to the variances, they are all a result of um the wetlands situation that is uh critical wetland. Uh, condition of the subject property. Um, uh. It's a four point five acre site and it's got budget showed. Substantial portion of this property is is encumbered and there are serious restrictions on the use of the use of the property. Um, there has been no interest, um, uh, as Little Worsman uh had had indicated. Uh, for single family detached residential development property that's been trying since two thousand thirteen to use this property and have been able to use it since. There's a there's an old church there that's being used as a church now, but that was never the plan. It can't even be developed on uh for the village of Bensonville. Or uh for a church and 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 because of the water and sewer uh problems. Uh, the owners are under a serious hardship right now, uh, and and they have tried so many different ways to develop this property. Uh, and and comply with the village's request, whether it's developed as a church initially that the village decided they didn't want, or whether it's for residential development. Uh, which uh uh they had a contract orbit that uh that didn't work even for multiple family. So, um, there has been no indication whatsoever uh of of. And I think that the plans and presentations show that there's not going to be any any uh um. Experiment uh to light and air as a result of this development. Um, it's not going to create any hazard to fire. This is going to be a fully climate controlled, straightforward uh. Uh, development. Um, the the uh developer in this case is experienced and uh um is a very successful contractor. Um, uh, I I I won't own the values um uh for the uh for the chairman's uh direction. Uh, but I do think that um a vacant piece of property um uh developed uh is in the best interest of the uh self, self, health, safety, and well, welfare. Traffic congestion and traffic generation minimum. I think we all know, and it's it's fairly having sense that uh. Uh, these self-source units, people sign contracts for a month or a month on end, and uh they store their their items in a property there. Uh, yes, they come and and uh and they make trips, but it is, uh, Jim Matatina said they probably get eight trips a day. Uh, very, very minimal, and I would submit to you that it's substantially less than the effort if if the property was developed with a single family uh residential uses. There's no indication of any flooding damages. The site is going to comply comply with all the uh county's codes. Uh, and uh I would submit that there's nothing to be shown that there'd be any extent for powerful fire protection or flood protection, excuse me. Um, uh, that is extraordinary. So I do think that we established uh through our presentation. That uh the public health, safety, and welfare will be um enhanced by this development. Uh, the property has remained, but maybe for a long time. Um, trends of development are residential. Uh, as I said, um, there there really was one residential development in the north of the subject all the way up to Herman Park Field and uh and that has been longstanding. So, um, uh. I believe that that establishes it the standards to meet the uh the book, the resilient and the condition uses. Um, the condition use and variances and if you have any more questions and technical signs.
Right, thank you very much, sir.
I do.
Let me just indicate that uh. These were not offered as exhibits in the hearing this evening, but we have a uh an October twenty five, twenty twenty two. Letter, an objection from the Bensonville School District and a October twenty four. Uh, this letter is in City of Wooddale, also an objection. It's. One page and two pages letter respectively. Uh, we'll close the hearing for this evening. There's been some discussion before the hearing about uh scheduling issues, et cetera. So our recommendation meeting here will be. January, uh, what's the January date? January five at five thirty in this room. And uh we'll take additional information as necessary, and the record will remain open. For the uh submitted uh written information if needed until uh, say, uh. December. Fifteen. Uh, Bensonville. That submitted additional. All right, thank you very much. We're close for the season.
Happy Thanksgiving.